From the Chair of Vitschke by Chankowski.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call the City of Salina Planning Commission meeting for January 20th to order. I'd like to ask you to please stand with me for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next item is celebrations and accomplishments. This is an opportunity for members of the commission to tell the things that they've seen and noticed, been a part of in the last couple of weeks that make them proud or happy to be in Salina. Anybody have anything?
I have one.
Go for it. Good.
I understand that City Go Bus added a fifth route, so I think that's great.
Yeah, it sounded like it was going to cut down the travel time for quite a few people that way. Good. Others?
Mr. Chairman, I have one that's right here in our planning commission and with this, and with our chairman. I was watching with some displeasure the KWC-H report on that vape application we had a week ago, and we had some willing commission members and some unwilling commission members involved in a story that I thought was just very wrong and poorly. I mean, it was just inaccurate. And it made me think about all the negativity that there seems to be out there. It's at the state level, the national level, it's in our own commissions here. And I think that's unfortunate. I don't understand why everything has to be so negative. I don't know if it's just that the media likes to present everything with the outrage context, or if we're just getting older and grumpier as a society. And I guess this is for social scientists to figure out. But I do know that when we come to these boards and commissions that we bring our own attitude, and that's a choice on our part. And I'd like to commend the chairman on our little part here where we talk about positive things in the community, because I think in a sublime way that helps to us to frame our attitude properly. So, attitude is a choice, and I'm glad that that's on the agenda.
Thank you. I have one that I'm going to take a moment with, too. I had an opportunity today to sit in on the focus group for housing here in Salina with the RDG group, as well as Mr. Story and other members of the community. And it's very, very exciting to hear the things that this city is looking at and considering as we look at housing needs now and in the future. So, I was really happy to be a part of that. Any other things before we move on? Item number four is a consent agenda, and this would be the approval of the summary minutes of January 6th. I hope you've had an opportunity to take a look at those. If you have, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move we accept the minutes as presented.
Second. It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Before we move on to the public hearing items, we're going to take a moment and hear an item from staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We haven't covered it in some of our, we're still working our way through our study sessions, but one thing that we haven't gotten to because we haven't had cases that have come up in any recent time, but to me, one of the positive aspects that we have in terms of inter-relationship and communication with Celine County is that we have an inter-local agreement between the City of Salina and Celine County to review and comment on any subdivision plat that's filed within three miles of the city limits of Salina. And this is David Neal with us, who is the Celine County Planning and Zoning Director, and he has referred to city staff for a joint review, a proposed plat. And one of the requirements is that that plat be shared with the City Planning Commission for review and recommendation before he takes it to his own county planning commission. So, even though this appears it's more of a surveying exercise than a plat for new development, I'm just going to give David an opportunity to give you an overview and allow commissioners to ask any questions or raise any concerns that they might have before David takes it on to the county boards. So, I'll turn it over to David.
Evening, commissioners. I'm going to point out on the map here, what you're looking at is lots on the north end. You'll see they're outlining the subdivision there in that white outline. This is the north end of Old Highway 81. It's technically, it's about a mile and three-quarter outside the city limits. I want to say it's about two or three miles north of I-70. If you scroll down a little, you can see the edge of the city limits barely. Where does it come in? There it is. And I guess if we scroll down a little more, we've got a close-up of that subdivision. As you can see, Lot 1003 in the northwest end of that subdivision is landlocked. The property owner, oh, thank you. There is 1003 right there. Property owner owns 1003 and 1002 as well. The property owner would like to sell 1002, but once that happens, 1003 becomes entirely landlocked. He won't be able to develop that. What he is proposing is to adjust a lot line, and this is going to be badly drawn here, but coming across so that he can have frontage on Old Highway 81. And with the plat, Old Highway 81 has restricted access. They'll be asking for an opening in the no-access easement. For the county, we'll have to discuss the access easement because Old Highway 81 is a, for the county, a busy road. And as far as the frontage part, talking to a couple of people in the public, nobody has had a problem with the lot line adjustment. If you have any questions, I'm here for you, and hopefully we can take that on to the planning commission.
Technically, this is already part of the North Bluff Estates subdivision, so it's not truly a new subdivision. It's just a replat, a reconfiguration of an existing one.
Correct, reconfiguration. I like to have the plats redone when you adjust property lines. It makes it easier for title companies, for surveyors, anybody doing property research. Plus, we are talking about that no-access easement, so the only way to open that is through a plat.
David, is there access to, is it 102? The property wants to divide. Is there access to that now off of 81?
Correct. There's currently an access right here. You can see the driveway.
Okay.
There is an existing culvert that will provide access for 1001 and 1002 combined.
Okay.
What they would be proposing is a new access point, basically just south of this 1005 property here.
Okay, so he'd come down, go south of the line, and then onto the highway if he could.
Correct.
Got it.
Property owner would be responsible for all the costs associated with
paving the driveway.
... access drainage around there.
This is not within the urban service area or future growth area of the city. And of course, that's one of the reasons we bring this to the City Planning Commission is sometimes you have parcels within between a mile and three miles of the city that might impact future growth patterns of the city. We don't see this as one of them because of the floodway for the Celine River north of town, the lack of utilities, and not likely to have any extension. So, the city doesn't really have any role or interest in what happens here. But under the agreement, it's supposed to be brought before you just to see if you have any comments or concerns.
Anybody from the board? Mr. Neal, thank you for the information.
Thank you.
You just need, if we have comments, you don't need any action from us or anything.
If you, if you want to make a recommendation or a motion that there are no city growth implications, and that you recommend that the county go ahead and approve the plat, that would be an appropriate motion to make.
I'd be willing to make that motion. I would just move that there appears to be no city growth. Would you use ramifications?
There's no growth issues associated with this.
No growth issues associated with the proposal being made by the county, and we would recommend that you take that forward to your zoning group.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. To give a vote in support of this, is there any discussion? Anybody have any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thanks, sir.
Thank you, commissioners.
Glad to have David back on the job.
Yes, indeed. I was going to comment about that very thing.
Item number five, or public hearings. 5.1 is application CU 14-9 filed by Reginald Benoit requesting approval of a conditional use permit to establish and operate a tobacco shop in a C5 service commercial district in a commercial building space located on the east side of North 9th Street, north of Woodland Avenue. The subject property is legally described as lots 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, and 20, Block 5 of the Pacific Edition, and is addressed 1804 North 9th. This was continued from December 16th.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we pointed out back in November, city staff, being myself, met twice with Mr. Reginald Benoit, and his question was, what would it take to establish a tobacco shop or smoke shop? And the location he had in mind was a commercial building located at the corner of Woodland and North 9th Street, which is owned by Mr. Dallas Lyles. And he indicated that he would, desiring to lease a portion of that building and open a shop. So, we worked to develop a conditional use permit application, and that was scheduled for a public hearing before you on the 16th of December. At that hearing, Mr. Benoit stepped forward and said what he was wanting to do was really more like a convenience store without pumps, without fuel pumps. And we clarified for you that if somebody wants to open a retail store and it just carries tobacco products as an accessory item, such as the Five Corners Convenience Store nearby, that that is a permitted use, and it is only a use that is primarily or solely a tobacco shop that would require a conditional use permit. And so, we told you that if, based on the public hearing, that you conclude that it is a convenience store and not a tobacco shop, then there's not a need for a conditional use permit. And it would just mean that in the future, it would have to be established as a convenience store, and that would be worked out administratively with staff. We suggested taking no action until that could be confirmed. The best means that we could figure out to confirm that for you. John, if you could go to the floor plan, please. See if we can get this oriented. I believe the entry doors are on the south, so 9th Street is off here on the left-hand side. There's a glass entrance and entry doors here, and then there's a space in here. These are former dance studio spaces. This is a hallway leading to restrooms. This space over here is used by Mr. Lyles, and so it would be everything from this line over to 9th Street. And so, you continue to-
I'm sorry, Mr. Andrew. Could you again point that, is from where to the 9th Street?
This is a wall right here. I guess, John, can you go to photograph that looking north?
I know.
Okay, so we have a door here. There's a common wall right here. This space right here is utilized by Mr. Lyles. There's a wall here, and from that wall over to 9th Street is what's represented on the floor plan. So, you can go back to that, John.
Okay, so my question is, is the tobacco shop intended to be covering all the floor space to 9th Street, which is what I thought I heard you say?
We will get to that. I haven't got that for you.
Okay, yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
So, you voted to continue this item to the January 20th meeting to allow time for staff to meet with Mr. Benoit and determine his desired use of the property. After your meeting in December, Mr. Lyles, owner, came in. He provided staff with this floor plan, which is that space. We then furnished a copy of that floor plan to Mr. Benoit, the applicant. We asked him to indicate what portion of this area he was planning to devote to his shop or store, and that would be step one. And then step two would be to have a general merchandise plan to see whether it was just this area here, or whether he was going to include any of these dance studio spaces. As of the deadline for putting together the agenda packet, we had not received any additional information from Mr. Benoit regarding the floor plan or merchandising plan for that area. What, and it's not an apples-to-apples analogy, but one of the things, and I think we only have two or three of those uses in town, and I don't think one of them's, but one of the businesses that has a similar approach is a, we have a couple adult bookstore, adult novelty-type stores. Whether they fit in that classification is based on their merchandising floor plan and the percentage of merchandise and floor area devoted to that use. And so, part of what is required for that is to submit a floor plan to staff, which we say, okay, well, 25% or 20% or 10% of your area is devoted to tobacco products. The rest is other food or other items. Therefore, you are not classified as a tobacco shop. We are not at that point to know either way at this time. So, these are the options that we have identified for you today. One would be to take no action on the application and consider it to be withdrawn because we haven't received any additional information since the original request. If you did consider it was withdrawn, Mr. Benoit would still have the option of working with staff to come up with a plan for a convenience store that that would not involve the planning commission. Then if we ended up back in the tobacco shop discussion, then a new application could be filed if that was the applicant's desire. Option two would be to receive whatever information the applicant provides here at the hearing today and approve a motion to either approve or deny the application based on what you're provided here. Or a third option would be to continue the public hearing to a future date to allow the applicant additional time to provide that information.
Any questions of staff?
Yeah, I have three. One is-
One at a time.
Well, I think I can only ask one at a time. I have to commingle the sentences. The applicant, is applicant or representative of him here today? Nope.
I'm the building owner.
Okay. And then, secondly, if we consider this withdrawn, does he get his $135 application fee back or no?
That would be discretionary. He would not get all of it back because we have some direct out-of-pocket costs. It would be whatever we have not expended. In other words, we have postage, we have advertising, those kind of things. But we could refund a portion of it.
And then, has staff attempted, other than maybe a letter or a meeting, have you tried, did you try to call this gentleman at all?
I have tried to call him on several occasions, and I did not give him the floor plan in person. I mailed it to him right after the December 16th meeting and have not been able to establish any contact with Mr. Benoit.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
I said, Mr. Lyles, the building owner, is present. And because he is the owner, we've included him in the correspondence.
I want to confirm that the applicant is not in attendance. And I'd like to call attention to a policy 91-1 that states if the applicant or his representative is not in attendance, it will be rescheduled. And then if he's not in attendance at that one, the commission shall deem the application withdrawn for lack of interest. I would entertain such a motion from someone if they were so inclined, and we'll just vote on that.
I'll make that motion. We deem the application withdrawn and per item number one on page three of three of the staff report.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of determining that this application is being withdrawn? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
What that would mean is if Mr. Benoit reestablishes contact with Mr. Lyles or herself, we will still work with him, but only in regards to a convenience store space and not for a tobacco shop, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 5.2 is an, is application M14-24 filed by Salina City Planning Commission requesting a review of possible amendment to the bike route map of the Salina-Kansas Comprehensive Plan to substitute an internally-produced bike map plan that would more clearly depict the goals and priorities of the cycling community than the current bike route map in the Comprehensive Plan document. I think we'll have a report from staff here in just a moment.
Well, we had a public hearing on this at your December 16th meeting, and staff was given a few homework items, and some of the discussions centered around the relationship between the proposed bike route map and the City Go bus routes. And then, there was also discussion about whether we are providing access to or near the schools. So, on page six of your report there, we kind of summarized the feedback that we got. And one of the feedback items was a lack of the, of good east-west routes. And related to that, what is the preferred or recommended route for connecting the K-State Salina campus to the downtown area? The Markley Road, Magnolia Road loop needs to be connected. There was a question related to the schools, and this could be a follow-up item. If there are schools that are not directly on a bike route, should that be addressed through the bike route map or by coming up with safe? We have safe walking routes and safe biking routes to all the schools, and that could be addressed separately there. And then it was brought up by Abner Purney and has, by others, that, and John, I don't, what map do we have up here? Could we go just to the bike route-only map? This has got bus routes on it. Could we go to the bike route-only map? Do we have three maps? So, this is the bike routes and trails only. I'm going to ask you to zoom it up to 100%, John. Okay, we have added for discussion and consideration a route on Republic extending over from Santa Fe west, actually from Lewis on Republic all the way over to Centennial as a, the most desirable, lowest-traffic east-west bicycle route. We have, if you could scroll over, John, we have shown the Markley-Magnolia loop with the dash line here to show that that is a future loop connection, but that improvements are required to really make that loop work. I guess our thought would be that Santa Fe to Republic to Centennial with recognized need for improvements to Centennial or Long Centennial would be the preferred route for connecting K-State Salina to the downtown area. And then I was going to share in some discussions, if you could scroll up, John, or the other way to get the south part. Okay, we've got this K-State Salina, we've got this dash loop showing a need for improvements here along Magnolia and Centennial to really, the, there's some discussion we've had with the engineering department. There's a project to finish out Centennial Road, basically from by the Water Tower and Bailey Road down to Waterwell Road to convert that to a urban curb-and-gutter section just like it is farther north. And there's been some discussion about a 10-foot-wide path along the east side of Centennial. And so, that needs to be included in this plan. So, that would imply at least a loop. And you're just going to need to keep scrolling, John, because we need to get as far south as possible. So, what Mr. Purney suggested was the route continuing on Centennial, coming to Scanlon, using that to Schilling, and then back over here. When we get to here, then we're tying in with the bike paths on Schilling Road and South 9th Street, although getting to and across this intersection would require some modifications and physical improvements. And then, then the question would become, if you're starting at Waterwell and going up, then presumably that path could continue all the way up to Schilling. So, the question is, should the path be Centennial continued, or should it be Centennial, Scanlon, and then trying to get back to Centennial again? So, it's been brought to our attention, the lack of east-west routes, the Markley-Magnolia loop filling that in. And then, it's not the easiest thing, but to see, it's best if it's blown up, but we've got the schools located on this map, and you can get near most of the schools, if not directly by the doorstep. So, I guess we'll kind of start in that order and just see what thoughts are about the east-west route and our suggestion of plugging in Republic from Lewis over to Centennial as providing an east-west connector.
I, so I would take it, Mr. Andrew, that the, that the road would be then a shared roadway on Republic from Santa Fe to Centennial? Am I hearing that right?
It would most likely because of pavement width and other things. It would probably be what we would call a bike route. There would probably not be lanes, but there would be sharrows and share-the-road signs and markings indicating that as a bike route to share, share the road. We've got Dan here, and I'll see if he has any thoughts that way. But we're not, we're not talking about dedicating separate lanes on Republic. But the question is that, and it's true, most of our loops that we have and the predominant routes that we have are mostly, I mean, Salina is a linear city, but most of our routes are linear north-south, more so than east-west. So, of the east-west through streets, we looked at Republic as being, because of its connection and its lower traffic volumes, as the best east-west connector route and the best way to get from southwest to the downtown area.
Well, the thought that I had, having traveled that fairly frequently, we live on East Beloit, or East Republic, excuse me, and I know that it is certainly on Republic the most direct route straight through. There's no question about that. I'm just wondering about perhaps using Beloit, the road just to the south of it across, for a good share- about perhaps using Beloit, the road just to the south of it across, for a good share of that portion until you- I'm trying to see which street that is, but you have to come back up to Republic eventually, you know? So I- that's just a question in my mind. I don't know. There may be disadvantages to that route as well, but less traffic, certainly.
At some point, you've got to come off Beloit to get back to Republic, because Beloit will run you into Sunset Park.
Right, right, exactly. Yes. Can we put a bike path over the slough?
Bridges or a little more crossings, maybe?
Yeah. Well, I- actually, I'm just a block off of that, of Beloit where it does cross the slough. And it would look like- and I know that would take some engineering, but it sounded like a nice path to me.
Other comments or questions?
We chose Republic because it does cross the railroad tracks, it does have signalized intersections, and it does cross the slough, so.
Right.
That was the thought. Now, when you're at Republic and Centennial, it doesn't, it doesn't always- you're still going to need to have some improvements there. There's- and maybe Dustin and I and a few others may be the only people that really know about it or think about it, but back in the early 1980s, the Salina City Commission would- we have rail banking, but I would call it street banking. They street-banked Cherokee, which essentially is a straight run from Sunset School, straight down to Cloud Street. And it's, it's got an elevated roadbed, and essentially that's all still there. It's all city right-of-way owned by the city as, as right-of-way. And one of the things that occurred to us, having been back there, is that in terms of getting that half-mile from Cloud to Republic, that does provide a pretty good route for a bike path or trail that gets you from Republic and Cherokee here by Sunset School, straight down Cherokee to Cloud. There's a bridge there that has a widened sidewalk, and that might be preferable to trying to navigate or make changes to Centennial Road itself.
I would concur, having ridden bikes in that area and been on some of the Saturday morning bike rides. I'd- that sounds appealing to me. And I'm sorry, I just want to add one quick thing about that route. It seems to me from Broadway over on Republic is generally, my observation has been, and I don't know a automobile count, but it seems like there's less traffic, not to say there isn't traffic. It seems like less than to the east of Broadway on Republic to Santa Fe.
Yeah, the primary, there is traffic using West Republic to get to the Manufactured Home Park, to get to the south and the airport industrial area, and also some peak travel for Sunset School during peak hours. But we, we felt like Republic was, was of all the east-west connectors that that, that was the best candidate. And then the Cherokee option here is still on the table to be able to get to Cloud, which does, would certainly be low-traffic and easier to navigate and better riding than, than trying to modify Centennial.
It doesn't have to be an either-or situation. You could include both.
It could be both. But I didn't know how many commissioners were avail- or were aware that, that Cherokee right-of-way is still there and available for.
Wouldn't have thought of it at all. And then, but generally, I think if the route is a direct route, they're probably going to take that unless there's going to be signage in the future that helps bikers recognize.
At the time, it was, I think, related to the airport industrial area and maybe the school, but it was, it's a, it's a direct route with no cross-streets, and it kind of runs behind some housing areas and things like that. And there was a lot of concern about speeding and short-cutting and things like that. So instead of vacating the street, this, the city commission just closed it to vehicle traffic, but kept it as a street.
For clarification purposes, the proposed bike route that we're looking at here, if that's endorsed and moves its way through the commission or whatever, will that replace the bicycle master plan as depicted in our packet? It'll, it'll replace those routes with these new routes we're looking at. Is that correct?
You'll have to, you'll have to tell me which.
I don't know. I don't have page numbers. Well, there's, in my packet, there's, there's the first drawing you come to that's a schematic is the proposed bike routes. I think that's the one we've been talking about. Then two drawings back, there's the bicycle master plan map. Those both have routes, but they differ.
The first, the first map, we, we kind of sent an email out trying to feel everybody out about how busy these maps were. The first map that is in your packet has all the proposed bike routes on it that are identical to the bicycle master plan map, but it also has the, all the bus stops and the proposed, or the bus routes for CityGo. And they're all on one map. And so there was a desire expressed by some commissioners to see how the CityGo routes interrelated with the bicycle routes. And so we put them all on one map. And then the second map just shows the bus routes separately. They have five routes, the blue, the purple, the red, the yellow, and they have just added, the green route is the new route that they just added, the fifth route. So the second map is for illustrative purposes to show what, what the bike routes are, so you could, or bus routes are, so you can see that independently. The map that says draft, that says bicycle master plan map is the map that the planning commission will be making recommendations on.
Okay.
And you're not making recommendations on CityGo bus routes. You're only making recommendations on bicycle routes, but the other maps were provided there and admittedly are very small on eight-and-a-half by 11 paper. So we're, we're certainly, what we thought is that we could blow them up on the screen here. But the, this that's on the screen now is the map that's up for recommendation with any additions, modifications, or anything that you might have. So we're, the, the information about CityGo was provided for informational purposes, but not for any action purposes.
Thank you.
Well, I would say we move this along and accept the staff's recommendations for Republic and Cherokee as well. And are you going to discuss the other green routes at the top there? Are those additional suggestions?
Those are, and, and Dan can chip in here as well. The, the green routes are trails as opposed, they're off-street trails. So this represents the long-term goal of completing the levee loop, so that the improvements end here. And long-term, the plan would be to improve the levee trail all the west, rest of the way along the north, northwest and west, if that's something you are agreeable is, is a goal to pursue. This green represents what was discussed with the Friends of the River discussion, which was improved, improvements to the channel here, which would include a, a trail that would be on, along the side of an improved internal river channel that would connect, starting at Ohio, follow the Old River Channel and tie back through Lakewood Middle School site and back to the bridge there at Lakewood, entering Lakewood Park.
You know, with the weather like it's been recently, and if we could, this is trail developed, this trail system, we could maybe replace Sun City as the wintering spot for many retirees. Instead of going all the way to Phoenix, the Canadians and those up north could just stop at Salina, do you think?
Right.
Kind of like ducks.
I support your idea. Don't go any farther than you have to. And I'd propose that we have more.
There were a number of bicyclists out this weekend.
Any other questions or discussion? I thought I heard the beginnings of a, of a motion to accept.
Well, we were, we were going to, one and two are kind of combined there. Do you, we see the east-west route and the way to get to K-State Salina as being somewhat interrelated. So if you were trying to get to downtown Salina, Santa Fe to Republic, over to possibly a Cherokee connector or Centennial to, to get to K-State Salina and back, that would be the, the recommended or, or preferred route. And then we tied in Markley with Magnolia. And so we've kind of covered those. Were there, as you looked at this and identified the schools, were there any schools that you felt were not close enough or that we needed to have a, what we'd call, I guess, if, if we were talking about roads and highways, we'd talk about a spur route or something like that. But do you want, do you want to see spur routes shown to the, the various schools, or do you want, do you want this to be the network and then how neighbors get to individual schools or children who get to schools would be addressed through our Safe Routes to, to School program? Or do you think it's important that there be bike routes that lead to the doorstep of every school?
My, my thought, and just glancing at it, they're fairly close. My thought is that that would be a good project for the Safe Routes to Schools Initiative, which the city and the school district work together with. And later on, I assume this could be fluid enough that if there was some determination made that there needed to be a spur route from one of these locations specifically to a school, that could be ran through the Safe Routes to Schools Initiative, really.
Right. That was our thinking, was it not, not to use the bigger master plan to try to address every.
Right.
School, but for the most part, we have routes that are, if they don't run by the doorstep, they are at least accessible to get from outline areas to a school.
Because any given school's going to have students coming from all directions, so you're unlikely going to have a direct path to, from every direction. So I think it's a good start.
And then I'll.
Want to talk about Schilling, Dean?
Yeah, let's.
Or Miss Schilling School. That's the, that's the obvious one.
You got Schilling School, and then you've got, every time you do a, a, I guess it was when we were meeting and discussing with KDOT, they, they didn't, they didn't allow for, for dead-end anything. If you had a minor arterial, it had to connect to another minor arterial and that, that type of thing. But if, if, this is Magnolia and Centennial, and I guess, Dan, what, what do you see as, as potentials for filling in this, this southwest quadrant down here? Obviously, we don't get very close to Schilling Elementary. And then you had some discussion about doing a multi-use trail along Centennial.
Yeah, Centennial's a road with no, no sidewalks on either side. It was just one that we identified with K-State as a possible future 10-foot-wide hiking bike trail or multi-use sidewalk along Centennial, which would then go to Schilling. And then Schilling has some existing sidewalks on it, and it does connect over to Ninth Street. So we could do some improvements to the sidewalks there to possibly make it a, more of an off-street trail instead of the on-street bicycle lanes instead. Similar to these red lines you see on like Ninth Street, Schilling, Ohio, those have the 10-foot-wide multi-use trails on them. We thought that was probably more what we'd see, maybe with that area. The, the street widths aren't the best for first bike lanes.
What about Centennial north of, when Abner Purney spoke at the last meeting, he, he talked about at, at the corner of Centennial-Magnolia coming down and then having a route go down Scanlon and then over to Sh- what, what are your thoughts about filling in between Magnolia and Schilling along Centennial? Is there, is there?
Centennial's a little narrow for putting a bike lane on it. So yeah, it'd be, if you could use a different, some of the K-State infrastructure, some of those old roads in there line up actually with Scanlon or, I mean, I think there's a way to get from K-State down Scanlon and is that, what's the middle one there? Is that Scanlon?
Yeah, Scanlon is right.
It runs north-south?
Yeah. And then Old Scanlon used to go through, but it's cut off as a street, but you can still kind of.
You can still use it.
Navigate through here on, on a bicycle from the K-State Salina, through the Votec campus and then onto Scanlon.
Yeah, that would, that would be a good, a good route for an on-street path at that.
If, if the, the trail started at Waterwell and Centennial, do you see any tying back at all, or is that just a, a starting point to go north?
A starting point to go north with the industrial area that's out there. We've got a project, Centennial improvements from the city limits to Schilling or approximately Schilling. Basically, any, any street that we build from now on, if it's an impact street or a complete street, we're going to put a, a 10-foot multi-use trail on it. So it'll, it'll at least have a new sidewalk. And once we build it there, then we can hopefully connect that to future, future trails either along Scanlon or along Centennial at some point in the future. And then east, along Schilling as well. But I don't know, yeah, south of Waterwell, there's just, I don't know what we'd be serving there, but eventually, you know, 100 years from now, maybe it'll serve some community or some, some small.
It'll get to Lindsburg.
Yeah.
There is a, it's not paved, but there is a, a trail that goes from Lindsburg to McPherson on the former rail right-of-way, so.
Well, you know, while not, maybe not perfect, but it looks good from what we know now. And you have a motion. Did you make a motion or?
No, I just was in favor of the proposals as they lie on the table.
Let's move it forward.
We have, we have written down the, the comments that have been made and will, can adjust the map accordingly. But your alternatives would be to recommend adoption of this map with any changes, additions, the majority of you think are appropriate. You could refer this back to staff and the Bicycle Advisory Committee for additional study and work, or you could recommend that this not be adopted at, at this time. If this were recommended for approval, it would be go on to the city commission and they would adopt it as a substitute map for the comp plan. And then as, as follow-up items, once a, once we've got these routes designated as, as bicycle routes, then the next step is looking at the, at the bike infrastructure or the facilities that would go with them. Would they be sharrows and, and a bike route? Would they be bike lanes? Would they be multi-use trails? That, that would be the follow-up, but you, you've got to have the, the network designated first before you go to that next layer. And then we would continue to work with the Bicycle Advisory Committee and Planning Commission and Parks and Recreation Advisory Board is to just develop some, some goals, objectives, projects and, and priorities. So once you have the, the skeleton in place, then we'll start to narrow in and say, as we try to build this network, what, what should be the priorities? Where should we start? What should be the, the main point of emphasis to start with? And so that would be a, a follow-up, but just getting the, the agreed-upon network or skeleton for the community is, is where we're starting today. So if you're comfortable with our discussion, then option one there would be to recommend adoption of this map and to send that on to the city commission with, with some of the additions that we discussed at this meeting.
So before we make a motion, I wanted just a question.
So before we make a motion, I wanted just a question, a comment and a question. I think the Scanlon Road down toward K-State or wherever we can find, like the Cherokee connector, if we can get some off-road parts of that incorporated, that would be a good thing. And that leads me to my question, and then, so this question's to you a little bit more specifically. Is that idea of Beloit, south of that part of Republic, along with a path over the slough, is that like, in your opinion, is that engineering and cost-wise infeasible? What do you think?
Not infeasible, just, we kind of have the easy sharo routes on there. The majority of these streets are going to be sharos, and so when you add in, well, it's going to be a, it's a, the slough's big enough, that's a, probably a $50,000 to $100,000 bridge to put over that if you want to stay out of the, I guess, depending on what flood event you want to design over. It's just a, it's a pretty long, it would be a pretty long pedestrian bridge. So it's, it's possible. It's just a, more of a funding, that one may take longer to get accomplished, I guess. And then you, like Dean said, you run into sunset, so you got to end up on Republic eventually anyway.
Right. But just there to Cherokee and then you'd have a...
Right.
Okay, that's helpful.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would move, if I may, that the Planning Commission recommend that the proposed bicycle master plan be adopted as presented to this line of comprehensive plan.
Second that.
Moved and seconded. Any partying shots before we take a vote? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you for the time that you put in on that.
Just to make an editorial comment, I want to applaud the staff. They listened to what we said last time and addressed each of those issues. The unfortunate thing is that every time we meet, we could add some more things, but I really want to applaud the staff for listening to those things and incorporating them in the plan. We thank you for that.
Mr. Kennedy is correct, but one of, one of the things that we wanted in moving towards this is that we, we kind of had these static maps and drawings that were produced when the comp plan was originally adopted, and by moving to these substitute maps that are internally produced, then we can be a lot more responsive. If, if next year we say we need to get a connector over to Husener School or whatever, it's, it's really easy to amend this, this map and supplement it or, but we have to start somewhere, and we think this is much more realistic and serve as a better guide than the static map that's in the planned document. So we appreciate that, and we, we do still have, for your consideration at your places, our annual report for 2014, so.
Let me just add a little bit of that as well, Dean. We want to applaud the bicycle, kind of have an advocacy group, I'm not sure how many are on that from this group, but there's a really good group of citizens that were helpful in vetting this through their own groups, and so that's, that makes this a lot easier on us, is that they've ridden the routes and agree with them and are happy with them, so that was also very helpful as well. Willie's staff was just more, we put the maps together, they drove them and approved them, or wrote them and approved them, so it was helpful to have their, their inputs. We really want to thank the, you know, the Phil Blacks and Jerry Browns and all the other groups that were definitely writing these and checking them out as we were drafting these.
What we, we forgot is part of our presentation, and as we look towards implementation, we have a short and hopefully relatively painless video we just wanted to share with the commission about implementation that doesn't look like what are our chances, John? This is, we are, we are not Seattle, Washington, but we thought this was basically a video tour of the bicycle master plan for Seattle, and what you'll, you'll see in here is different examples of bike infrastructure, such as a separate crossing signal, some of the signage, buses that are adapted for carrying bicycles.
Do our buses have those?
Our buses for CityGo do not have that presently, and that's something that we'll have to discuss. So the idea that you could ride to a bus stop, wait there with your bike, load it on the bus, and go to K-State Salina or something is not something presently available.
So we're building facilities that work for people that are eight and people that are eighty and everybody in between. So we have a Greenway's program that we're modeling on a couple other cities where we say, you know, not everybody's going to feel safe riding down an arterial. And so we need to have neighborhood connections that are on neighborhood streets where the speed limit is a little bit lower. But we're also putting in new bike facilities on arterials because that's really connecting people to the shopping that they want to do or to the jobs that they're commuting to.
You know, the most successful part of the bicycle master plan, I think, is actually two parts, the vision, it's got a really bold vision that we're excited to see, and the collaboration that went into creating it. So this is a city that really wants to have a say and really wants to be part of the process, and the process around create, the creation of the bike master plan, and then the bold vision that came out of that collaboration are both just really exciting. The next thing is funding the bike master plan and then also continuing to invest in bold innovative ideas, and if they don't work, being willing to take them out and try something else until we find, I want to keep innovating the way other cities have done and then start leading the innovation.
So Greenway is a street, sort of a neighborhood street that has a whole variety of different treatments, just depending on what the need of the street is. And so in some contexts, it may be narrowing down a crossing at an intersection, others it may be marking out a contraflow bike lane, there may be bulbouts, sometimes it'll be speed humps, sometimes it'll be simple pavement markings. It really all depends on the context of this location, but it's just a whole suite of improvements that are designed to make the traffic on the street, to reduce the traffic on the street, and then for the traffic that remains on the street, make sure that it's going, you know, 20 miles an hour or less.
Protected bike lanes are vital for the perception of safety, and as we saw on Second Avenue very tragically, for the reality of safety too. That was a road that you could bike on as a very confident cyclist, but it wasn't clear to drivers or to cyclists who had the right-of-way. And a protected bike lane clearly demarcates where the right-of-way is and who should be doing what, with signage, with paint, and with clear lights. And so the protected bike lanes are vital when you have a congested area with lots of different modes vying for who has the right-of-way to really clearly tell everyone, this is where you need to be, and this is how you can get through the space as quickly and efficiently and safely as possible.
Frontal cycle share is seen as being a regional system, so understandably, we started it out in the densest neighborhoods of Seattle. Our plan is to expand it, to sort of fill in the gaps and make that existing network even denser, and then continue to expand it out from there. At the end of the day, our original business plan called for us to have around 2,200 bikes and 220 stations, but, you know, we will kind of evolve at a pace that matches the funding and the demand of bike share.
The thing that I'm most excited about over the next five years is that we're really going to start building out the spine of our bike network. What we're doing is building this great north-south protected facility that will allow folks that are taking the Berg-Gilman Trail or anything coming in from North Seattle, take all of that, funnel it onto this great facility that will then connect to our downtown network of protected bike lanes. And I think at that point, you can start seeing the whole network start to come together and really show people how they can get places on bikes in protected facilities.
We plan to show that to our Bicycle Advisory Group, and that will just be food for thought on implementation. Just as anything else, you got to start with a plan, and then you have your priorities and you gradually implement it over time, but if you never start, then you never start implementing it.
Yeah, we're going to have a, this should happen this year. We don't, for any reason, it won't, that any street that we're overlaying with a Millan overlay or a microsurface of some sort or reconstructing, we don't see any reason that we wouldn't start adding these this year. So you'll start seeing them, we're pretty sure, based on City Manager, and unless the City Commission has some, you know, they have some costs associated with them, but when you actually redo the road anyway, it makes sense to put them in at that time. So we'll have quite a few this next year that we are micro-surfacing, going to put pavement markings down, or might as well put a sharo or a bike lane, depending on what this says. So that's where we're headed at this point. Thank you all.
I wanted to share just a quick motorist experience with bike lanes in Alexandria, Virginia, where we were visiting our daughter, and I was coming out, they, by the way, have bike share as well in Alexandria. And I was making a right turn and realized suddenly that those striped, zebra striped poles were sticking up to indicate that this was a bike lane, and I darn near pulled into it, but when you see those poles, you know that's a no-no. So those things will come for high-traffic areas.
We still have an item, administrative item number six to look at the 2014 annual report, and I assume, Dean, you're going to lead us through that a little bit?
Yeah, the City Commission asks that each year, the advisory boards and commissions that it creates and appoints, that they file a report of their activities from the previous year and any communication goals, communication they want to have. And we have supplemented at your place kind of a summary of all the different cases you heard and made decisions on this past year. Two things we would like you to focus on is we, they are always interested in meeting attendance and participation, so we have done that, and if you want to take issue with any of the attendance records that we keep, this would be your opportunity to do that, or sidebar with Crystal or I, we both arrived at these numbers together, and so this is what we came up with. It includes people who are on the board at the start of the year but whose terms finished up, such as Mr. Bossmeyer and Mr. Welsh and Mr. Purney. And then some of you have been on for a shorter time, but those of you who've been on all year, you would have had 20 meeting possibilities. And then we also have a list roster of the active planning commission and your expiration dates and your residence or mailing address, and then at the very end, we just have a schedule, and that allows you to see when the meetings are upcoming through the 2015 year. And as we discussed in steady session, this schedule is what we follow and use for when somebody has to file an application, when a notice has to go to this line of journal, when letters have to be out and received, and then when the hearing occurs. But with the schedule, you should be able to calendar out when scheduled meetings are this year. And then I think two things that, or three things that are notable and somewhat record-setting in that regard is that in 2014, the Planning Commission heard no annexation cases or requests. No one applied to change the zoning map on a piece of property except for the fire station, which was done as a planned development district, and there were no new residential subdivision plats. And so we provided a little bit of history on that. In terms of the actual number of applications, you heard it was down a little, but pretty much on par with previous years, except for the fact that we had no annexation requests and no subdivision plats. And so we've broken this down into a comprehensive plan, activities, your continuing education, that was done, your review of applications, the membership changes and officers, and then some of the goals, many of which are carryovers, so if you see anything on the goals that you'd like to add, subtract, or whatever, that those build up over time and it helps staff kind of develop its, its work plan, and a lot of these are carryovers because they didn't get done for various reasons, so that helps us. We did leave in the desire to schedule a joint City Planning Commission steady session as, as a goal, and other of those goals were carried over from the time that the comp plan was originally adopted. But the idea is, is to look, look that over, see if there's an accomplishment that we missed, see if there are goals that you'd like to add or subtract, recommendations for the City Commission that you'd like to add or subtract, and then based on that, we would forward this on to the City Commission as a report of your activities for 2014.
Yeah, anyone have some things they'd like to highlight?
Dean, on page two, at the bottom there in the last two paragraphs, the last sentence that reads, replat in Block A of the Quail Meadows Edition, State's Edition did not, did convert a C1-zoned area into 14 residential building lots, the only new residential lots created in 213. And the part that follows, which is an indication of the continued slowdown in the residential activity of the city, I think that's an opinion, and I'd like to see that portion of that line removed.
I would agree with that.
Also, in the last paragraph, it says, "The lack of platting activity indicates the market is still absorbing the residential lots created in 2008 and prior years," and I think that's also opinion in this report, and that it could be left out as well.
Some of that is going to be addressed in the Housing Needs Assessment that's going on right now with some planning commissioner participation. So we've noted those items, and we will, we will delete those from the report.
Other input, comment? Is this something that we need to act on? Is there, were you just receiving this report?
It would just be a motion to submit this on your behalf to the City Commission with those changes noted by Commissioner Ryan, if that, someone wanted to make that motion.
Actually, there is the one thing that I would like to note, this is a little bit self-serving. My attendance is incredibly low, which it actually was, but I was also finishing off a master's degree and had to miss because that's the only time I could take the class. Is there a way that that could be noted? Just so folks know, I wasn't just slacking off, that I actually, there was a reason that I wasn't here.
Well, you're still here, that tells you that we all know that, because typically with that kind of attendance, you'd have been asked to resign.
Yeah, the, we, we got room for footnotes down there, and we can add that, and supposedly the, if we have more than three unexcused absences in a row, we're supposed to report that to the mayor that we're having attendance problems, and we did not do that in Mr. Cusick's case because they were not unexcused absences. So we can, we can put a footnote down there that those were excused absences in finishing out a master's degree program.
Thank you, and I do appreciate the opportunity too that you gave me to be on the commission, so thank you for that.
And I just wanted to just respond, I think for the record, I'm not opposed to Commissioner Ryan's suggestions for deletion from the plan of that language. I do think it ought to be noted that residential activity also indicates, as I see it at least, a shift in emphasis and a waiting for the infrastructure provided by the city to fill in, an infrastructure that was already there. And so that clearly is a matter of, has been a matter of discussion in City Commission meetings, and I don't see that adding anything to this report would change that. change that. So I think just that for the record.
And part, part of that was just our internal knowledge that compared to six, seven years ago, we're, we're issuing about half the number of new residential building permits that we were six or seven years ago. So there, we are, we are not consuming lots for new home construction at a rate that we were in the past.
You're looking comparatively at the total and not at the market segment.
Right.
Not the low, middle, high.
Right.
So that's my reason for extracting the opinion, but we could probably get quite an argument about that.
We didn't.
Why those things have occurred.
It does not isolate the where, and not, and we, we issue permits for Habitat for Humanity homes and things like that, which have nothing to do with new subdivisions,
We have, I think we have a motion in a second, I believe, asked for discussion. Is everybody done with that? Let's take a vote. All in favor of...
Did we have a second on that motion?
Was it down here?
I'll second.
Wallie, okay. So we have a motion in a second to forward the annual report on to the City Commission. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
We will get that passed on, and...
Are there other matters?
The only other matter is that we will go upstairs and check. We had a deadline to submit a, an appeal on your conditional use case that was heard on the sixth. It's 5:00, and so we'll report back to you whether that was appealed or not. We do not have any, we do have an item looking forward February the 17th. At this time, we don't have any items scheduled for February 3rd, and I'm thinking that we probably will not meet on that day.
Do we need to vote on?
We, we can dream something up for you if you really want to get together.
I think I'm about to say, this meeting, oh, you have anything else?
No.
This meeting is adjourned before we do anything.
...in the north, and for the last year, really, have been pushing south towards the capital and taking territory until they got to San Ar, took control of the city in September last year.
And we can make the distinction here that these rebels are not associated with the al-Qaeda in the Arabian Peninsula, right?